I'll just open the meeting. It's hello, everybody. Sorry for the delay that you've been watching. A little technicalities since we haven't had a ZBA Zoom meeting in a very long time. So thanks for sticking with us. Here we go. So today is Thursday, September 29th, 2022. It's 5:30. It's now 5:42 that we're getting started. This is a virtual meeting. This meeting is not open to the public because there's no public hearing. So I don't have a long preamble. If you're used to hearing that. And we'll get down to the business. So I am going to share my screen. And if I seem to be looking to the side, it's because I got two screens and I'm focused on my other screen, not the camera screen. So let's. Okay. So tonight. We're going to open the meeting and we're going to review draft decisions for two projects that we heard last month. So for the first decision, it's Barrett Ellen Masaro, 16 Dartmouth Way. The applicant is seeking a special permit finding for relief of section 97 dash four D five C oh one increase in footprint. And 97 dash four D five C oh two upward extension of the Newbury zoning bylaws than any other permit relief as may be required under the town of Newbury zoning bylaws. To allow the proposed use project. The applicant proposes to raise the existing nonconforming single family dwelling, nonconforming right side setback. And to construct a new, more conforming, single family dwelling on piling with an increase in footing and height on the lot. Right side setback to be increased. Will be less non. So the right side setback will be. Increased, meaning the setback will be increased and it will be less nonconforming. Located at 16 Dartmouth Way, LaMai Island, Newbury, Mass. Oh, one nine five one accessories map U zero two lot eight nine. And so here we go. The draft draft. Came out. Earlier today. Let's see. If I. Now, everyone, can everyone see and at least. Read. Or see where we are when we talk about the document. Is that clear?
Yes.
Yep.
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 Okay. Um. Let's see. I probably should say that we have Eric Fong Chair here. We have Michelle Wheeler, who's a member, voting member for these hearings. And Mario Carnavalli was voting member for these hearings. Chrissy Buprey is our administrator and Colleen Hayes is here representing the applicants. So with that and reading through. There were some comments that were made by Martha Taylor, Town Planner, and those appear in the margin. Certainly, I think we should update or date the document for today as we're discussing it. Riemble seems to be in order. The procedural history is in order. I guess I'll just run through each section and Mario or Michelle, if you have something, please speak up. All right, so the procedural history is outlines. As clear as the steps that were taken, submitted information. I have one comment and it. We did receive a printed handout of the presentation that was made. That is a summary of the information. But I don't have it or the other information to check to see if there was anything new that was added. And so we'd just like to note. That there is that a presentation was and was handed out. At the meeting. Does that make sense?
Yep.
So Chris, I think we just need to put that in proper language. And say that. Yeah, I just, I guess, Colin Haines of Thinneran Nichols PC presented, provided a handout of the presentation of the application.
We did supplement the the FAR calculations to Chrissy shortly thereafter. Because we didn't have the existing.
It says that number F, it says FAR checklist revised, FAR checklist reflecting existing dimensions received by 1922.
Got it.
Thank you, but that is in there. So that that is the. That is the record of the submitted materials and information. Findings and determinations, general facts of the findings. And we come down to Jay. I'm sorry, fraud scrolling. At the hearing, the applicant through its counsel and designated representatives presented arguments and testimony supporting its request for. And what the comment was is that the applicant actually. Wasn't requesting relief from the maximum height only did not only dimensional, nonconforming. Nonconformity is the side A setback, which is still not conforming, but less nonconforming in nature. So perhaps the rewarding might state. Presented arguments and testimony supporting its request for support request. Supporting its request. To raise the existing single family dwelling and build new single dwelling family on a lot. That's what's being asked. Does that make sense to anybody? Does anybody have any?
Yep, it makes sense.
Yeah, that makes sense.
All right, you had that there. Okay. So specific findings. I think that's all. Straightforward. And then we get to the decision. In view of the foregoing, the zoning board hereby finds that a special permit is warranted based upon the information submitted as the project is proposed. Is within the height limits as set forth by Newbury zoning bylaw and zoning provisions governing LaMai Island overlay district. Improves existing nonconforming conformities with regards to side A setback while keeping FAR lot coverage and all other setbacks conforming. The zoning board further finds that a special permit may be granted for the proposed project. As shown on the above mentioned plan without substantial detriment to public good. And that the requested relief can be granted without nullifying or substantially degrading from the intent or purpose of Newbury's bylaws. Subject to the terms and conditions stated below. So the first one is standard, the second one, standard, third. Is standard. Fourth is standard, and it does say that if there are any modifications. To the structure, other than those approved by the zoning board of appeals or the town of Newbury by through its building inspector shall require modification to special permit to standard. And appeals may be made. So that's pretty straightforward language. We didn't have any unique conditions. Michelle, any? Other questions, comments or edits?
Nope, not on this one, no.
Mario, any additional questions, comments or edits?
No, I'm good.
All right, so is there with that and the? One. Two. Three edits, that third one being the date. But those edits is everybody, is there a motion to be had or?
Yeah. I'll I'll make a motion to accept the three edits.
Okay.
Of tonight, of today.
Is there a second?
A second.
All right, all those in favor, and since we're on Zoom, I'll do a roll call. Michelle?
I, yes.
Mario?
Yes.
And myself, Eric, I, yes. All right, so it passes. Chrissy, if you give me a thumbs up if you understand the edits or if I need. That's clear. Save, stop sharing for a second. Close that. And go back to this. Re-share. Here we go. So the second. Hearing for draft decision, Jody and Amy Lekemere, 20 Northern Boulevard. The applicants are requesting a special permit finding for relief from section 97 dash four D five C. Oh, two upward extension of the Newbury zoning bylaws and any other permit relief as may be required under the town of Newbury's zoning bylaws to allow the proposed use project. The applicants proposed to modify the existing nonconforming, single family dwelling, nonconforming front yard setback. Those modifications will not result in any additional nonconformities, but will result in an increase in height. Still within conformance, located at 20 Northern Boulevard, LaMai Island, Newbury, Mass. Zero one nine five one assessors map U zero two lot one one. Okay. So let's see, this is. Can everybody see the draft?
Yes.
So again. Actually, we'd like to just update the date. This is going to take a second longer because I don't read it quickly, but not detail. So just going to say procedural history. Does anybody have any comments, Michelle or Mario?
Nope.
Not procedural history, no.
Okay, number two submitted materials and information. And again, Chrissy, if we could add the presentation handout, same language that we had previously. Previously. Proposed and accepted for the last applicant obligation or decision. So the supplemental information we received that I'll show in a minute is that all dated the 19th. Or is it received on the 19th? Because Doug's letter is dated September 21st. Let's let's read through this. Let's look at the. Submitted. Additional attachments and then we'll come back back to that. Okay, findings, determination, different facts of the findings. I guess line F says the property is currently improved with a single family residential dwelling. Specific findings. Any questions, comments here, Michelle, Mario?
Nope.
No.
Okay. And then the decision has the. Standard five. Conditions with no. Unique. Conditions to this decision. So with that, let me.
I think, didn't we say, did we want to mention anything about that it needs? If there's any changes required after it goes to the Concom, it'll come back to us. Because it hasn't gone yet.
The. Yes. Okay. So.
Yeah, maybe it can be included with number four.
Yeah, so I was just looking at what and. Sticking the same. Same thing. Right in there, just add. This word, actually. Through its buildings, parent.
Mr. Chairman, just for a point of clarification, the documents on Masaro were over on the 19th. The documents for Latimer were over on the 21st. Just hope we want every, all the dates correct.
Okay, so. Northern 20 Northern Boulevard is the 20.
Twenty first.
Okay. I'll just hang on for a second. So these should be the 21st, is what we're saying.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, Eric, do you want when we receive them or you want the dates on the drawings? The day on the drawing is. The plans and elevations is September 15th. Then the site plan is September 19th.
So that the. Applications and the received drawing should be stamped in as received. Because you could have a drawing from 2000.
Yep.
And then someone brings it forward and hands it to us as part of an application and it gets stamped in as received as part of the application. And so we're tracking it from that.
Okay, so just from months received.
Yeah, it is, I think it's a technique. It is a technicality, but.
Okay, sounds good.
Well, and yeah, and I think it's it's perfectly acceptable to say that they're dated September 15th and that they were received on September 21st. So that's somebody who is looking at this and trying to put the pieces together that there was a hearing and that there was a decision and the decision was viewed and accepted that they understand the timeline of when things were available.
Yeah.
So that's an excellent point. So it changes back to the 15th. And then added received on September 22nd, 21st.
There's another line at the beginning of that paragraph.
Oh. Okay, so that's the one that needs to change.
Yeah, so that was received the 21st, yeah.
All right, thank you. Okay. Chrissy, Chrissy, you good with that? Yes. Face information. So now I'm going to. Show the plan. The plan was updated to. To show the setbacks here. 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 As being the. There. Quickly go back to. The text. Okay, so here's the next in the spec- specific findings. It mentions. Decide A, decide B in the rear, but they do not match the. They they don't match the updated dimensions that were put on there. So the granting special person, so on does the specific findings of need to be, those would need to be edited. So we get to that. You just give me a second to make the edits and then what I'll do is I'll switch back and show you exactly what. Change existing nonconforming setback of 16.6. Okay. So the. Rear one's easy because it's 75.4, but the. The one that was noted as being. Less nonconforming in terms of the outline of the building extends to this point. So it's 6.5, 6.5 was existing and 6.5 remains, which makes it not. Doesn't make it improve, it just makes it the same. Where before the number nine point. Five was being shown, the number 16 was being shown. Does that make sense to everybody?
Mm hmm.
Okay, so if I now switch back to. The decision. Like this, just a bullet. So in making this request, the applicant counsel voiced the following. In granting the special permit, the new proposed structure will result in a non-changing existing nonconforming front setback of 16.6. Side. A side B and rear setbacks remain the same conforming setbacks. Is that? Is that?
In order here. The joys of a hound.
Okay, so 16. 16, 13.7 and 83. So point six. 13. So let's get this.
Yeah.
Different. And granted, especially with the new proposed structure will result in non-changing existing. Will result in. Minor. Minor. Changes to. The existing. Existing setbacks. This is to 16.6.
Increase.
Six comma. Side A. What was the siding nonconforming before?
Well, it it didn't change right because of.
Okay, so. Result to minor changes to things that will result. Well, prostructure will. Hide.
It shouldn't change any of the setbacks because it's the same footprint. It was just a matter of they didn't measure from the deck. So the deck original measurements were from the house and not the deck.
Right, but then the like so 16 and 16, 13 point. Seven is still here to the house and not to the deck, so the 13.7. Okay, so this 13.7. seven is still here to the house and not to the deck, so the 13.7, okay, so this 13.7 goes to 6.5.
Yeah.
Okay, and then the sorry, if it's off screen, it's just that I'm looking at the plan, can only show one screen at a time, the setback of 83 goes to 75.4. So if they're listed here. The front side A, side A setback remains non-conforming, but that non-conforming does not increase, remaining the same at 16 feet, side B setback is at 6.5, and rear setback at 74.5, so one, two, three. Where is the back A, side B, rear, where is the front then?
12.3. Oh no, 16.6.
Yeah, 16.6.
16.6.
Okay, the sign A. Increase, remain the same, 16. Okay, so sorry. Front setback remains non-conforming. Architect, I think that non-conformity. Please. Grease. Side setback piece. Side setback, here's, remain conforming, do not change, okay. If you guys just read that quickly and just make sure, makes sense.
I think side B, I think the language just needs to be the same as side A in the front, because it's not conforming anymore, right? Because it's less than eight feet.
So this, yeah, I'm sure it's good.
I think it's just the same language, so that the three, both the front, side A and side B are all remains non-conforming, but the non-conforming does not increase.
Right, it's, but it's the, it's the front and the, and the side, what I would say A is the right, is A is the right, B is the left, so the, the front and the right side A remain non-conforming.
Oh, okay, side A, if side A is the right, that's the one that's at six. At 6.5.
All right, side A, six back remains non-conforming, that non-conformity does not increase, or meaning at 6.5 feet. The front setback remains non-conforming, but that non-conforming does not increase, remaining at 16.6, side B setback 16 feet. Six. And rear setbacks, and four feet remain performing and do not change, thank you. Okay. Then so that's that. Then we come down here and front setback increases to 16, 6 side A is the
Well, I think so down here, nothing changed, right, because all of this, like, the footprint doesn't change, so it all stays the same.
Is that, is that side B, did you have 16.6 for side B too?
So
That should be 16, yeah.
That's all, 16. And then I got, and that, it's side A is the 6.5, side B is the 11, 7, rear is 75.4, and the front increases to 16.6. Okay. Maybe that one went difficult than it needed to be, but so then we get to the decision. We then said we were going to add approved by the zoning board of appeals for the town of Newbury, by and through its building apartment conservation commission and conservation commission, so require a modification to the special permit and whether any others unique conditions requested in this.
No, I think it was just that we needed those updated plans.
Okay.
That we received.
Yep, and then because we have them. There are some updated drawing where the bathrooms are drawn in, and all the rooms are labeled and the stairs were, were added. So that, that's what was requested, just to make sure everyone understood what the rooms were on the plans. Is that clear to everybody?
Yeah.
Sounds good to me.
So just jump back to the decision. So, Michelle, any additional comments?
No.
Great, Mario, any additional?
No.
Comments? There a motion to be made to accept that?
Yes, I'll, I'll make a motions accepting new plans in regards to setbacks and descriptions of rooms.
And accept motion.
Get second the motion.
Okay, second, all those in favor, and I'll do a roll call. Michelle?
Yes.
Mario?
Yes.
And Eric, myself, yes, so motion passes, decision passes. And Chrissy, if you just give me the thumbs up again, if you got all the edits, or do I need to send my copy to you? Okay, we're good. So Colleen, we reviewed, made some edits to the draft decisions, we approved both draft decisions. Chrissy will make the edits, she will print these and
She's ready to know. There you go, yeah, Eric, please email.
Okay. All right, so I will save, and then I will email two markups that we did, send these to Chrissy, Chrissy will make the edits, Chrissy will put them in the box, and we will each combine and sign them as soon as Chrissy gives us the email that says they're ready to go. And we'll try to do that in short order.
Great.
All right.
All right.
There's no other business on the agenda, so there's nothing really else to discuss.
Sunday.
What'd you say? Oh, Monday, yeah, so not tomorrow, but they should be available by Monday, so then we'll, we'll work to sign those and in short order, so that, that's, that's the plan.
Great.
Okay, no other business, so is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn the meeting.
All right.
Thank you.
Good. All righty, bye, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chrissy, Chrissy, excellent job.